All right. Welcome, everybody. Um, Charlie, you want to read your statement there?
Sure. Town of Templeton, public hearing notice. To all persons deemed interested in the Templeton Planning Board acting under the Town of Templeton zoning bylaw 8.4, site plan review, a public hearing will be held on September 13th, 2016 at 6:30 PM at the Narragansett Regional High School, Kiva Room 464 Baldenville Road, Baldenville, Mass. To reconsider the site plan for the new elementary school building. All interested parties who wish to be heard shall be heard. All relevant documents for review are located in the offices of the Planning Board and Town Clerk 160 Patriots Road, East Templeton. For further information, call the Planning Office at 978-894-2767. Kirk Machete, Chairman, Templeton Planning Board.
Okay, thank you. Um, welcome, everybody. Um, just a couple of quick ground rules. Everybody that wants to speak tonight will be able to speak tonight. Just by raising your hand, I'll recognize everybody. Everybody will be able to speak. Um, but please let me recognize you first. We have a little bit of a procedure we're going to follow tonight to keep it orderly fashion. Um, if you feel in the mood to disrupt the meeting, just mazel... I'll warn everybody once, but this is your first warning. So the second time, I'm going to ask you to leave, all right? So you've already been warned once. Um, so we're just going to keep it, um, professional and hopefully everybody can, uh, treat everybody as respected. With that being said, I'm going to, um, turn it over to, um, Town's OPM, Mr. Jonathan Winaker. Um, he'll make the presentation.
Motion.
Oh, I need... Sorry. Uh, wait one minute, Jonathan. Um, Jon, um, Jon, make a motion, Mr. Public Hearing.
I'll say it.
And second of all, Dennis Holmberger. Bye. Sorry, he's motioned open, Public Hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Members of the Planning Board, members of the public who are here, uh, members of the town, representatives. We did put together a very short presentation. We know everyone is quite familiar with the project. A lot of questions and thoughts have come up, uh, over the last few months that we just wanted to touch on briefly, uh, as we went through it and just make sure that everyone had a bit, uh, of the information again before you as you reconsider and reopen this hearing. Uh, I'm going to start by just giving you an overview of quick history. Then we're going to turn it over quickly, uh, to members of SMMA who will talk, uh, about some of the project specifics, particularly as it relates to the site. Uh, and then Mr. Hudson, uh, your legal representation is here again, uh, to talk. And we have, uh, representatives from the town, from, uh, police, highway, fire, uh, who we know have pertinent information and shared with you in the past. Can everyone hear me okay? We know it gets, it gets a little tough in here, so I'll try and speak loudly and kind of sit in a corner. If we advance the slide, just maybe if I could ask you to turn in your seat so you could see this slide behind you. Uh, we put it up back here. That's really the only place to put it, but then everyone can see it. This is a timeline of the project. There's been lots of discussion, uh, about this, and I know, uh, strong feelings about the site. It's important to just keep in mind that this process began, it's cut off on the left, almost 10 years ago, back in 2007, the formal process of an application being submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority, the MSBA, uh, and being selected as one of the first districts in the entire state to be given the opportunity to do something significant to address your elementary school needs. They were deemed so serious, uh, that the state put you on that list as the very first, one of the very first districts to go forward. We were fortunate, this timeline chose, that we had a very generous donation for the Brooks family that started the process where their hope was to build a new elementary school on that parcel of land after a pretty extensive study. Uh, it turned out that that was not feasible for a variety of reasons. It was quite unfortunate, uh, and everyone was saddened, uh, by that fact, uh, that it was a reality. So we began the process of searching, scouring the town over and over and over again for other suitable, buildable parcels of land that could accommodate an elementary school and be acceptable to the town. There were in total three formal RFP, or Request for Proposal Processes. We looked at about nine different parcels of land that were out there. One of them was taken to the town vote and voted down. We had another parcel of land that was offered to us from the state on Route 202, uh, and that was studied very extensively, but in the end it was deemed, uh, unsuitable to build a school and the MSBA refused to give any money, uh, towards building a school on that site. So that was removed from consideration. And ultimately that led us to the Templeton Center Study, uh, to build a school and to become our, our, uh, formal, uh, location. In November of 2015, the Board of Directors of the MSBA formally approved that site and the project as presented to you in the past and again this evening. And they have generously offered, uh, that they will contribute almost $23 million towards the overall cost of the project if you build a project as, uh, it's been presented. That money goes away, uh, if any alterations to it, uh, to its location, to its general layout, uh, are made and there is no other option, uh, before you. They've made it crystal clear in writing and in conversations over and over again that this is it. This is all we've got, uh, as our option before us. This was all presented, obviously, uh, to the town over and over again. We had many public meetings in 2015, uh, lots of dialogue, obviously, lots of concerns as we've heard in this room, uh, and in other rooms across the town about this location, about this project, uh, all very good, worthy considerations. And ultimately, that's why it was taken to the, to the members of the town to vote on it. It was approved in town meeting in November of last year and then a town vote with a dead exclusion vote in December, uh, of 2015. Uh, and so that brought us to really where we are, uh, today. We've had the design team, members of SMMA, who have certainly been hearing, uh, the concerns that have been raised by the public, uh, as well as the schools and working, uh, I think carefully to try and resolve as well as they can, uh, all these issues. They've also been working very closely with the leadership, uh, of the town to incorporate all those thoughts also, uh, into a project that, uh, that works physically, educationally, financially, uh, against all these competing needs. And again, lots of, lots of strong opinions on all of this. We know you as a planning board, uh, have some strong reservations as well, uh, about the project and we certainly respect them. Uh, we have voiced our feelings on this and will again tonight. Quickly, Mr. Hudson, uh, your legal representative has shared his thoughts, uh, on it and, uh, as he had said the last time we were together, we will appeal i-if we're denied the land use permit, we will appeal in the courts and, and, uh, as he asserted, we will, uh, most definitely win, but it will cost us 12 months, uh, in his estimation. We've gone to our cost estimators and asked them what the impact of 12-month delay is to the project and they've told us at least a million dollars. Uh, so that is certainly a significant consideration that we have shared with, uh, Building Committee and School Committee, uh, in the past. We have already expended $3 million to date, uh, and we hope that you, uh, concur, uh, with the opinion of the group and, and, and Mr. Hudson and will give us, uh, approval tonight. So with that, I'm going to ask, uh, Joe and, uh, Peter, uh, to come on up and to, to walk through and Jim, uh, also on the traffic engineering side. And then at the conclusion of that, uh, perhaps we can ask the, the town folks and then, uh, Mr. Hudson again.
For the record, my name is Peter Blake, Civil Engineer. I was in the union key. And I think you folks have all been through this in part of the town, but I'm going to go through a quick summary of what we've presented over the last several months and I've got to make different things as possible. Everyone's familiar with the site. Oh, I'm sorry. And when I'm complete, uh, Jim Nguyen with Ron Mueller Associates over here is the traffic engineer and Jim will go through a, a quick summary on the traffic slides and go through those items. I think everybody's familiar with the site. The, uh, South Road, Wellington Road and Dudley, the intersection of South and Wellington down here, uh, the proposed school, the police station's over here and, uh, we'll quickly go into the school itself. Uh, the, the school itself is, is a three-story, combination three-story, one-story building. The classroom wing, which is on this side right here, is three stories and the, the public areas, which are the cafeterias, the support area, the gymnasium, mechanical rooms over here, that's all one story. The building's situated so that the three-story component of the building, which is this wing right here, the short ends of the building are facing the neighborhoods of old South Road and Wellington Road to try to minimize the impact. The lower part of the building, as it, as it reaches out into the site and the site components, move closer into the town area and embrace the town. The way this school is set up is that for parent drop-off for pre-K, this building is set up for pre-kindergarten through sixth grade. Pre-kindergarten will come in, the parents will come off and drop off on this Wellington school side of the project. All of the parking spaces is, there's, there's 20 parking spaces here. They'll drop off, they'll back out and then continue out of the project. Parents dropping off for kindergarten through sixth grade will drop off on this side of the project, which is the South Road side. Buses entering the site will enter over here from Wellington, enter onto the site. There's room for, there's a total of seven buses servicing the school. There's room for seven buses to queue through here. They'll drop off, enter the school, through these doors over here, then exit. The main entry to the building is over here, which has the, the administration and, and the, and visitors and students who went to the building over here from the parent drop-off. And as I mentioned, the PK area kids will enter through this area over here. There's a total of 68 parking spaces between teachers and visitors located in this parking lot over here and then this parking area over here, which is, which is being shared on the site with the police station. However, these 38 spaces in here will be, will be limited to just, uh, school, uh, school activities during the day. The, the police station will be gated off so that, you know, it'll be accessed by the police, they'll be able to go through here, but it won't be accessible by any of the teachers or anyone else going through that site. The play area is the Gladys Salem Playground, which is existing over here and is being relocated onto the site over here. And that'll be still a community playground used by, available for the community. And then there's a grass play area for the children to play in. Basketball court. Here's a service area for bringing supplies into the school and for dumpsters and for mechanical equipment entering the school. I'm going to turn it over to the, to the traffic component over there right now and we'll quickly go through that with Jim. Thank you.
Evening, everyone. Uh, I'm Jim Nguyen. I'm here on behalf of Ron Mueller Associates, Traffic Engineer for the project. Uh, Ron Mueller Associates has had a traffic study and site investigations. What I'd like to do is kind of go through some of the highlights of that study and obviously be available for any questions that you have. So here are some bullet points of the traffic study and things that we found as part of our site investigations. So as part of our study, we looked at six locations. We did traffic counts. We looked at the morning school peak and the afternoon school peak. So this is inclusive before and after the school begin and start. Uh, as part of our traffic study, we did find some operational safety deficiencies. Um, and one of the things we did, obviously, we reviewed these changes with the police, highway, fire departments. Uh, one of the biggest changes includes and addresses a lot of our initial concerns is a one-way traffic flow. Kind of a come-to clockwise circulation around South Road being north direction and Wellington Road being the south direction. Uh, circulation is, uh, Peter had mentioned earlier, we do have two parent drop-off areas. They are separated, one on South Road, one on Wellington Road, and as mentioned, you know, for the different grades. The bus drop-off will be onsite and on the school side, that'll be isolated to that area. Uh, some of the big, and I'll get into more detail, those six locations and some of the improvements that we're proposing, but some of the, the bigger improvements that we're proposing as part of this project is modification of the intersection of South Road and Wellington Road. Um, we say here, those two big streets are going to make a T-intersection, but really it's kind of a four-way, um, but a T-intersection with the main roadways. Uh, for Dudley Road going on to Wellington Road on the west side of the intersection, there's a red tight radius. Uh, we're looking to do pavement widening to get a 45-foot radius and make it a lot easier to get there. And there's also other improvements as well, which I'll get into. Uh, and then finally, a, a big bullet point here is, uh, both Wellington Road and South Road would have school zone classes. So as I mentioned, the six locations, it's shown here, uh, you've got 2A in Dudley, uh, South Road in Dudley and then Wellington in Dudley. So those are the, the three Dudley intersections and obviously the two site driveways, the one in Wellington, which would be enter-only, the one on South Road, which would be exit with the one-way circulation. And then finally, I mentioned some improvements at Wellington itself. Uh, on this, you can kind of see the arrows are showing that one-way, um, kind of the circulation that I mentioned. Uh, the arrows would be where the direction of the traffic would go. And then Peter had showed more of the detailed plan, but this is more an aerial view of the, the study area, the circulation pattern, where those drop-offs are in relation to the improvements that we're proposing. And this is more where the elements are aerial, this is more just a plan view, so you can kind of see, uh, more detail about one-way circulation. And it shows here too, some of the improvements that we'll be discussing, uh, and believe this one, yeah. So broken into three different plans, so you can see in a little more detail. I know it's kind of tough to see on a little screen that far away, but hopefully, um, once the independent intersections come up and I'll try to explain a little better to what the improvements are. Uh, so we have first intersection, I'll discuss Dudley and Wellington. The second, we can South Road and Dudley. And then finally, the third intersection, we'll talk about is Wellington itself. So the first intersection, as I mentioned earlier, so if you're coming up Dudley, turning onto Wellington, you can see that purple line, oops, wrong button, uh, purple line right here. So that's an improved, uh, or increased radius to allow people to current onto that road. Uh, and also the other improvement as well as, one of the concerns we had in the traffic study is the width of these two lanes. Uh, with two-way flow and people use two-way on both directions, this is pretty narrow. Uh, by doing this one-way circulation, it makes that lane with adequate, uh, for people to use both directions or, uh, come in for both of those directions. Uh, in addition, one of the benefits we get by having the one-way circulation is now we have a, plenty of room for a dedicated bike lane, which is here highlighted in yellow. So I'm going to push wrong button again. Uh, and you can see here the defined narrowing of the road, uh, with those new lines. The second intersection is further up, uh, this is the South Road of Dudley. So again, with the one-way circulation, this would be the northway, northbound direction. Uh, the improvements at this intersection, and again, um, by doing these changes, the one-way flow, it would make it easier for people to exit onto Dudley, uh, from South Road by having the one-way flow. You can kind of cheat that corner a little bit, uh, plus you're pulled away from that, the edge line. So it gives you, uh, generally the bigger radius to make that turn onto, onto Dudley. Uh, again, there's a dedicated bike lane, shown in the yellow highlighted section. Uh, and as part of this plan, there's those current 90-degree spaces, uh, in front of that building. As proposed, we would want to change that to an angle spot. And what this does is it really just defines the one-way circulation instead of having a confusion when someone backs out. It makes it a lot more, one, makes it easier to pull it around, but two, to also give a more defined direction once you do back out. Uh, one of the other benefits of this location of making the one-way, when you do back out onto the public way, now you're really only dealing with the one-direction traffic rather than dealing with two-direction traffic. Uh, finally, third location I talked about, uh, that intersection of, of South and Wellington. Uh, today, and, and actually, there's the, the yield sign coming up Wellington, which is rated, it might have been missing the first highlight that it, which, which is good, but there's still a, a large amount of pavement there. Uh, there's, there were some certain sightlines, basically with that fenced area and trees right in the corner, basically for either way, if you're coming up South or Wellington, you'll be able to see opposing traffic. What the improvement here is to define that T-intersection, uh, basically making, um, Wellington's T into South Road. Uh, and that would be under stop control. It would be the, um, you know, continuation of the one-way circulation, but obviously per this, this out would be two-way flow. Uh, continuing from Wellington Road, oops, sorry. Uh, continuing from Wellington Road further down, that would be under yield control, so you wouldn't have to stop. It's only making that left as we're at stop sign. And again, you can see here the yellow highlighted where the dedicated bike lanes would be. And, yep, that's the last one.
Just, I'd like to speak more, more correction than I spoke on. The school is going to be PK through five. I, I had said six times, one like that. Very clear that it's PK through five. So we may get time. We're on that time.
Thank you, guys. Uh, Chief, do you want to maybe speak a little bit about the traffic pattern and the discussions you've heard, you vocal about this in the...
We want to ask questions.
Well, okay, when the, when the school committee came to, or school building committee came to the, the property heads, it was myself, uh, the fire chief at the time, uh, Chief Ham was now step inside, placing, um, who would also go in, but Chase, the highways are never intended by. Um, this has been a long ongoing problem or issue that we've had with the traffic pattern. As you can see, there's many, many residents here have come to us and complained about the sight pattern, the sightlines coming up South. This totally eliminates the sightlines and you will not have the right to edit this anymore. Turning on to Wellington Road from Dudley Road, I just did this last week. I turned on and had it backed down because a TT unit was coming at me. The road is not adequate for two-way traffic. This eliminates that problem. Turning onto Dudley Road from South, now you have a wide turn radius for TT units turning up the road. Is the site perfect? No, we all know that. But I believe that with this traffic pattern, any other incidents or things we're going to do to alleviate it, as we learned, will help to make this site usable.
Thank you. And then, uh, Mr. Hudson, would you like to, to address the planning board?
Sure.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Rich Hudson. I'm an attorney with Town Council's Office. Um, I am here as a representative of Town Council's Office with a duty to provide the board with objective legal advice. I am not here as an advocate for the project. Um, I've provided you with quite a bit of material about the Dover Amendment, uh, so I'd like to just, um, hit a few, uh, brief high points about that. First of all, um, the, the school project is an exempt educational use under the Dover Amendment. So it cannot be prohibited. That's, that's its status under the Dover Amendment. Um, the second important point that I would like to make is that an exempt educational use cannot be denied through site plan review. Very well established, I've provided you with materials that, that clearly establish that. Um, and the third point is that, as I mentioned, this, um, use has to be treated as a use that is allowed as of right. Has to be treated the same way. It's like a single-family residence in a single-family residence zone. It's allowed as of right. You don't need any permit really for it except the building. Um, a use that is allowed as of right cannot be denied through site plan review. That's also extremely well established. So those are the three really important points that I want to leave you with. Um, again, I understand that there is, you know, sincere, strong opinion about this project, but a, a planning board under these circumstances simply does not have the legal authority to deny an exempt educational use such as this school project. I'd be happy to answer, try to answer any questions you may have.
Yeah, I should, I'm going to stab right at the cake. Thanks for the presentation and keeping it short, that's good. Um, I will open up to the board, but I'll start with Kristoff down here.
Yes, I just want to ask a question for the traffic engineer. On those six traffic count locations that you did, was that with the little thing in the road that the cars drive over, so it tells you how many? Is that why you did it?
Uh, no, actually, so we did peak hour traffic counts at those locations. Uh, so we did two hours in the morning, two hours in the afternoon, and it actually included someone actually sitting there counting the hours.
For how many hours?
So it was two hours in the morning, um, I can, I can, I think it's 7:30 to 9:30 in the morning. So it included before and after school start, uh, and then three to five in the afternoon.
Okay, so you, you watched the traffic?
So literally someone sitting there manually doing the traffic counts.
Would, would a, for a project of this size and a traffic pattern, this kind of challenges to, you know, outline it, et cetera, would not one of those traffic counters that goes across the street that tells you what kind of equipment is going down there and there for a week or two at different times of the year give us more accurate and comprehensive information?
So we do have classification during the peak hour count, so it's actually a shift button on it. So they hold the shift button, pushing, so it does break down the type of vehicles during those peak hours. Um, and, and for this type of project, it's very limited impact. You know, you have really people dropping off and people picking up. So those are really the time periods that we're focused on. You know, you see that the curve of traffic will be significant in the morning, dip-off significant in the afternoon during other times, you know, it, it's almost irrelevant the traffic volume from the school. It's really during the drop-off and the pickup times. And so that's why we made sure we encompassed both before and after school start and end.
So one day, two hours, both times, you feel is adequate?
Yeah, so there's a bunch of things we do. We look at seasonality, um, so, yeah, and even part of the generation, we look at the students at the school at that time. So there was a lot of things that we factored into, um, to being that count that we did when we did it.
And then one other question that I had asked earlier that I didn't get a total response to is, is the, is the traveling lane on Wellington 11 and a half feet wide?
Uh, currently or what is proposed?
Currently. No, proposed, I'm sorry.
Um...
They're, they're both allowed.
Yeah, that's why I thought the plan said show was allowed. But you do have shoulders and you do have, it is a very wide bike lane as the, on the side.
How about farm equipment? There's quite a few farms up South Road. Does a farm, does a tractor with a baler or a tractor with a...
In terms of...
You need a 20-foot gate to put it...
Peter's showing us plans.
Yeah.
We, we, we did look at a, a tractor coming up South Road from the South, coming up through the intersection and going up to Dudley Street intersection. The tractor with a baler was able to make that turn. Then we also looked at a tractor coming in, it was coming, um, up Dudley and taking the right down to Wellington and it can make that turn coming around that corner as well.
No, just the width of a track, oh, with a, with an offset baler behind it is wider than 11 feet.
The, the model that I grabbed, um, off of, I went on websites and looked for the, the, the equipment that is allowed to be on the road through permits, it was, it was not any wider than 11 feet.
It is just a, it is non-uncommon to have a light lane, where 12 and more standard 11 is not uncommon, as you typically will see that, and even in turn angles, it is kind of...
We did, if I could add, certainly, if the building committee raised that and had the design team go back and do this research and show all the plans, an oversized baler, uh, coming down the road for just that reason and to prove it on the drawings, so they did have meetings where they, they reviewed that, that finding?
What?
I have a tractor and a baler that doesn't fit in 11 feet, actually. So does the Mr. Nygaard and so does, and so does, uh...
11 feet, I think it's... 11 feet is the painted lines that the road is actually going to be just as wide as it is. We're not changing the paving surface area at all.
Exactly, that was what I was going to try to bring up. Do we know how wide the pavement is up there now? Peter?
Sure. The travel lane is 11 feet wide. Well firstly, the existing pavement...
Overall pavement right now.
Excuse me?
Overall pavement.
No, yeah. The, the, the existing pavement width is varies throughout the road because there's some trees going up, but it, it averages about 24 feet on both roads, it, it directly in front of the school. On, it, it tapers down in a couple spots on Wellington. South Road is pretty consistent at 24 feet. It's actually even wider at the school. So the way the lines, lanes are set up is that there's a five-foot bike lane opposite the school that continues down the road. There's the 11-foot travel lane and then the leftover distance is a, is a paved shoulder, it's not changing. And that averages, uh, well, it's eight feet down to a minimum of probably around four feet in some of the locations where there's trees that come in on Wellington. But the, the actual paved area does not change from what it is today. It would actually be easier for, for a baler truck to get through there when it's one-way than when it's two-way, because if you have traffic coming in the opposite direction, you're narrowed down to 11 feet or, or so, even less maybe in that time, where now you have 11 feet, no traffic coming in the other direction, plus you have the opportunity for the shoulder on the other side.
Okay, yeah, that was, thanks for clarifying that. Um, Dennis, you also, wait, was, you also have a note?
Yes, thank you.
Dennis?
The counters that you have, did you, did you have any counters out there?
Um...
I mean, uh...
The two?
Chains, mechanically.
Um, I can check, I don't believe we put...
There were some...
Uh, we might have, actually, let me check real quick. It's been a while since we did the study. Um, yes, we just did turn accounts, uh, the main turn accounts, yep. So we did not have the two, yeah. We actually had, which sometimes, and we found that actually having someone there is the most accurate way to do it.
I would think so, because sometimes there were vehicles parked in front of us.
Yeah.
I have questions about the Wellington South Road, uh, structure. Okay, if you can.
Do you want to get the other? So Wellington and South, you said?
Yeah, I see one number three. We've got travel trucks that are going to now have to go up to South Road, I mean Wellington Road and turn to right down South Road.
Correct.
Are they going to be able to make that sharp turn like that?
That, that is a fairly wide, uh, radius right there, making that turn. Um, Peter, do you, would you have...
Yeah, we would look at WB40 to be able... Yeah, we looked at the WB40 to be able to do that, yeah.
Really?
I guess my question, I think, would be, why would a trailer truck need to go up Wellington Road, you only ask to go back down South Road?
Because if they want to go to Charlie's, or they...
Well, I think they put themselves in their own little situation.
You're gonna have trucks delivering to the school site during the time of construction.
Well, for the school too, you do have the...
You're gonna have, there are vehicles that go up there all the time.
You have a service area on-site as well, which then you have the ability to cut the site.
Let me ask, Chief, is the traffic, when do you predict a traffic pattern to actually take place?
We discussed that with the selectmen, they would like a three-month process, but because this is delayed, I don't actually know. I mean, they want ninety-day drive and then for it to go into place.
Okay. But are we talking within like the next few months?
Depends what the vote is here tonight.
Okay. But is the school, is the traffic pattern hindered on the school going in or not? Or is the traffic pattern changing regardless?
No, we're gonna go forward with traffic pattern anyway.
That's, okay, that's what I was trying to figure out, okay. I'm just trying to follow what you had said, Dennis, as far as trucks are gonna be coming to the site for construction. So the traffic pattern already being in play?
So they're gonna have to go up Wellington and turn and come back down?
Well, or they will be driving onto the site and coming off the site to be in construction. You know what I mean, the trucks won't, they won't be servicing the site from the side of the road, they'll have to be driving onto the site, so they'll actually have easy access coming back off anywhere along South Road, so to speak, that's just from my own personal perspective.
Just on the, on the construction vehicles, the construction access will be coming down Wellington, onto the site to deliver, do whatever work is necessary on the site, if exiting on the South Road, so on the site.
Take a left off the side.
Construction vehicles will not be going down Wellington to the South Road intersection. They'll only come into the school property and turn back.
All right, Dennis, anything else on that? Do we want to be fucked on that, don't you?
It was construction, so it's okay, it doesn't matter.
Frank, Dennis, you all set for now?
I'm, oh yeah.
Okay, Frank?
A lot of misconception, which you already mentioned, a lot of people, this board here tonight is not here to vote the school out. That school was voted in last year. I mean, that's not the reason we're here. And also, all we're trying to do is making it a lot safer for the children. That's why we were not here to vote the school out, it's already been voted in. Then my thing, that's on that point, on a traffic study, I'm not bragging, but I've been in this town fifty-eight years, you address Wellington Road and South Road, Wellington Road. Meanwhile, from here almost the length of this room, you've got seven stop signs, seven intersections. Why didn't you incorporate all these problems into these two roads?
I guess I'm not, well, which seven stop signs, so you're talking about...
Front of church stop sign, opposite road stop sign, Wellington Road stop sign, South Road stop sign, onto Patriots Road, all these are, if you stop three, four cars, you're gonna back up the traffic for a mile in front of the church. When you cut across from Bonville Road, in front of the church, that's Wellington Road. Then you gotta cross Delly Road. Well, what are you gonna do when there's three or four, five cars in front of the church and you're waiting for the stop sign to go, traffic's gonna back up, back up, back up? I think some of these intersections should have been addressed, should have been changed, but you didn't address none of them.
So is that...
Every one of those roads is like this.
I think what Frank is saying is just such a congested area.
What's in the brushroom?
Well, I can, I can actually answer that. The town's had plans, the planning board was, the board that initially was able to go through, uh, do you remember the name of the agency in the state? Anyways, we ended up having plans...
Oh, no, it wasn't.
The state agency, through a grant, and we were able to get a new design to actually redo all that older section up there, but the town themselves chose not to bring it forward. It's not directly associated with the school. The town has the plans, but the town has failed the last ten years to certify the funds or fill out a mass highway works grant to do it, to bring it to fruition. So it's not up to the, this particular project, once again, it's still the town, but I don't believe myself that the town should be encompassing another couple million dollars attached to the school price tag, where we're smart and we pay for the engineering. I think Mr. But, you know, Mr. Chase is here, usually all the mass works grant, mass highway works grants work, is you pay for the engineering and they, you know, you get on the list and the state will fund it. So I don't believe the town should be spending a couple million dollars to fix something and get basics of our tax money back from. That's just my own personal opinion, but I do know we have the plans. Bud, can you chime in on that? Did I say that right?
Yeah, well, my first comment is, where I have a problem or a concern is that if it seems what I just heard from Frank and some other members up here that you're not wanting to stop the school project, but you're putting the brakes on because of the one-way traffic pattern. This is something that the chief and I and the police and the fire department have discussed for fifteen years. We never could get it moved forward, but it has been on the table, it's been discussed. So I don't see, and correct me if I'm wrong, where the planning board can tell us, that I say tell us, tell the board of selectmen and the police, fireman, myself, whether or not we choose to change a traffic pattern in the town of Templeton. We've already done it a couple times, we didn't come to the planning, to the planning board for your approval. This is something that we wanted to do, and this school project just kind of excited our plans to move it forward. And to speak a little bit, Kurt, if I'm not mistaken, I think you, I used to think about complete streets that new program the states come out with for funding for...
Yeah, there was, there were certain different ones, but what I'm saying is that the planning board issued it years ago, to get the plans, we actually have the plans, but it's the town's, it's the town's...
We've spent chapter ninety money on, our state chapter ninety money for improvements on Wellington Road and South Road some years back, but it's always been on our radar to make it a one-way, whether this, long before the school even was even thought about building. And I know there was some opposition, you know, a lot of discussion, you know, it's, sometimes people don't like change, but sometimes you have to change when population grows and you have to move people around. It's always been a total confusion in the area of the country store, people entering, wanting to leave, wanting to get in, and, you know, as was explained in the presentation here, this is just gonna make the flow so much better and safer for everybody that drives it.
The plan, we're gonna keep it to the board right now, we'll get to it, because I know the plan actually called for leaning Dudley Road more west on two-way, basically, we'd have to relocate the monument, so you would come into Route two-way at a T, no different than we did Bonville Road, you come into a T now, no more rubbernecking, where you had to always look over your, your right shoulder when you were trying to pull out of there. That's what the plan was designed for, so that's something the town needs to do on its own behalf. My personal opinion is, it doesn't belong to the school, because I think we should reach out to the state for such a thing and for funding.
And it's true.
Chief, then we'll go back to Frank.
Kurt, to address the sections at Patriots Road in Wellington, Patriots Road in South, and Patriots Road with Dudley on the two-way side, we can't address those with this project. That's a state road, we have no jurisdiction with that. We would have to have the state, we have the choice.
I'm soliciting help, but it's okay, Frank, we're...
Well, I thought I had the floor, but he took it away.
No, we're just trying to make sure, we're just gonna address one question at a time, then we keep going.
So anyways, the way I look at it, just because somebody says, it's the school department, the planning board, the Board of Appeals, living in this town, I can't see spending forty million dollars, when Bud just admitted that it's a bad situation. We all know it's a bad situation. If you're gonna spend forty million dollars, straighten it out, 'cause we gotta live, not you guys, not me, maybe some of these guys, them and their kids, are gonna live with it for the next hundred years. But we're gonna stand here tonight and say, well, we can't do no better? I have a hard time swallowing that, and I believe you, being engineer, should be to make it better. Why should we pay forty million dollars that we know is not gonna solve the problem? To me, it's not fair to the people. That's all for now.
Is that it? John, yeah, Dennis, sorry, down the line. Tim, you have anything?
Right now, right now.
I have a couple questions about during the actual construction process, the ability to actually have the equipment and the storage units and trailers like that, is there a plan in place for handling that during construction?
Yes, well, we looked at construction logistics, where construction parking is gonna be, where construction vehicle, equipment is gonna be, where stockpile is gonna be, and the way we're gonna handle the stockpile and the earthwork is that we're not gonna be storing earth on the site. When the earth is excavated, it's gonna be loaded into trucks and moved out of the site. But we have, we have shown areas through the school building committee of where the staging areas are and where construction parking is, so that it satisfies the project.
So approximately how much construction parking as well as, I'm assuming there'll be like equipment trailers and for storage and things like that?
Sure, we looked at, there's seventy, I believe seventy-two parking spaces between the area where the police station is and the area where Gladys St. Lott is, where we'll have our contracted parking. And we look at, there'll be four, there'll be four, four construction trailers that we'll look at. Located, located up to where the new Gladys St. Lott park in that area there, and that's where the staging is. Dennis?
The design up there shows you seven buses, which are gonna be from one end to the other of that road. You're gonna have a, between drop-offs on Wellington, I have to go around and come down south, and the drop-offs on South Road, you're gonna have a pretty steady flow of traffic through those, those buses are gonna have difficulty getting out of that driveway, and once they do, they're gonna be stuck in that, that area between driveway and Dudley Road. And you're, it's just, even now, today, when school was open, it was a difficult situation. And you're gonna be adding five hundred students to this mix, some of whom may even be walking to school. It's gonna be a really uncomfortable situation for everybody.
That was absolutely a concern of ours, when we spoke to school administration on how they're gonna manage that, and the way it's gonna be managed is that students that are taking the buses are gonna be released earlier than the students that go for parents. So all the students go for the buses, they'll be released into the cafeteria, they'll be loaded onto the buses, and then the buses will leave the site.
And then employees and the pickups will come then after that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, staff will be there by then.
Is that the staff?
Staff will let them in, but the, there's two separate driveways at the lot on the South Road side, so that staff and commander of the lot park while the buses are still queued up. So they don't interfere with the bus management. And there's, there's seven buses, and that's seven vehicle trips.
In the traffic report also, there was a statement that if you didn't go with the one-way traffic pattern, that you suggested that perhaps the vehicles would go in and make a U-turn, drop off the students, and then exit. Is that still a possibility with the current design? Because that would be a lot safer than having them drop their kids off right there on the road where the traffic is going by. That is not gonna be a safe situation.
Dennis, where were you, where were you replying to?
Well, we had the cars on each South Road and Wellington Road.
Okay.
Parents are gonna pull in there, the kids are gonna jump out of the car, and they're gonna go wherever to get to the school. Some of them are bound to go around the back of the cars, they're gonna be right in front of the traffic. In the original plan, in the plan that you submitted, it said if the, this traffic pattern wasn't adhered to, that you suggested possibly having a U-turn for drop-offs.
So I could define why that was the case. So we did not want parents dropping kids off on the opposite side of the street and then crossing the road. What we would rather do, in which we still feel the one-way pattern, being able to pull in without allergic traffic, safer, but if the town did go with the two-way flow, we would recommend we'd rather have a vehicle make a U-turn into the students who wouldn't have to cross the street. But again, our recommendation would be safer for pedestrians.
Just to expand on that a little bit too, is that the site is designed to have flexibility as if the road stayed one-way or two-way. We, once, early on in the project, when we heard that the town safety officials promote the one-way design, we didn't go into that in further line, say exactly how that would work, but we do have flexibility in there that if it did, if it does, if it turned, it became a two-way road, that we could make it work as well.
How many sites for pull-off on each road are, do you have?
There's twenty stripe spaces on the Wellington roadside, and there's fourteen stripe spaces on the South roadside.
You gotta figure, there's gonna be probably close to forty drop-off people, at least.
Yep, and the way that they'll be set up is that the school will work with staggering the drop-offs, the time to drop off and pick up, so that you don't get the full complement of all the students coming to the school at the same time.
I'd like some clarification on that later, when we get to, from the superintendent, St. Alasman.
I have a question for just clarity purposes, I guess I don't even know who's got to address you, but what is the timeframe, say like minutes-wise, from the time, say, the school staff's accepting students to time developments and everybody's in class, how long of a window will be looking in the morning? Afternoons are probably more flexible because they're, they're getting out, they're not rushing to the school, and I don't know if that's been asked before, but...
Yeah, gentlemen...
How much space do we need?
Maybe the principal, John Graziano, could you speak to this issue of the start, when do kids start coming to the schools, you've been...
How much of a time window do you like let kids come into the school, other start of the day? Is it twenty minutes, expecting kids to come in, all come in within twenty minutes, or all within forty-five minutes?
We commit at all different times.
Well, what time do you like you open the doors to school?
We open the doors presently at eight thirty-five. We just changed the start of the time.
Okay.
School starts at eight thirty-five, we open the door around eight ten. Eight twenty, excuse me.
All right, so start over with what now? You got corrected up there.
Fifteen minutes, oh fifteen minutes if they, before the start of the day to enter the building.
If I could.
Uh, Mr. Kazan, go ahead, please.
So to give you perspective, currently, we accept seven hundred and ninety-one students in our school currently. The buses start to roll in approximately, if we're taken, seven fifty. We are done at that point in time by about seven thirty-three. So what I'm saying to you is that they come in, as everyone here certainly attest to, in all different modes, and many of those folks who come to our school are actually driving themselves. I do wanna push back a bit above the elementary and kids going everywhere. That doesn't happen. I will tell you right now, currently, as everyone knows, we have a T.C. kindergarten and first graders in this building currently that is a hundred and fifty-eight students. We accept a hundred and fifty-eight students, ten buses, god knows how many cars, within about fifteen minutes. No, they are accepted into the building, they do not run behind cars, we accept them and they come. Actually, the way that the setup is here is that when they pull in, that is a much safer routine than we have currently in any of our situations. We accept them in high school, which is set up to, of course, accept kids. So within, again, given that we're now in the flow of things, seven hundred and eight, seven hundred and ninety-one kids, that's not even including a hundred and forty-some-odd staff members who are coming in, granted, earlier, they better...
It's gonna be tomorrow.
We do that in about, roughly about seventeen minutes, eighteen minutes, grand total, grand total.
You're not dealing with regular traffic. You pull off the road, you have a safety area, you have by the school.
Well, it's ten times harder now than it will be, because the traffic that pulls out of the high school currently right now, we have two-way traffic. What we know right now is that traffic that either needs to turn left towards Bonville or right, which would be great, towards Route two, didn't happen. The majority of the cars roughly about, uh, the... The majority of the cars, roughly about, last count, was roughly around seventy-four percent of the cars that do come in here are turning left towards Baldwinville. So now what they have to do is compete with traffic going towards Route Two, and they're trying to get across the lane and down. This pattern alleviates all of them, and that is why, you know, the one-way traffic pattern works best.
You're, having come from Gardner, you're aware of the situation with Elm Street School?
I worked Elm Street School.
Right. And you know the kids get out of the car, and they run, get out of the car on both sides of the road, let me pull up the side there.
And there's roughly two hundred and twenty-five yards from those front stairs to the, to the road in which they are let off, which there is, because that's the old high school. So there, there is no mechanism to actually pull in safely, which is off of the main line of traffic, and to let them off. Here, there is. That's Elm Street, is, is arguably the busiest street in Gardner, especially during that time, and it's two-way.
But the situation I see is being almost identical here.
No, it's not. So with all due respect, regardless of how, regardless of how this goes, it is apples and oranges. The high school does not have, well, in part, but if you're listening to me, Elm Street School, which is the old high school, has no capacity, first off, to drop off children close to the building, one. Two, the back entrance, it wasn't, they didn't, buses weren't even close to the sides back. As a matter of fact, someone's gonna have to help me, in nineteen twenty-five, tell me if there were buses, I have no idea. But if there were, they certainly were much smaller, because we have trouble getting them into the back. So the point is that they actually had to drop the buses, the children off by bus, with the school next door, which is Helen May Saw, which means now that they have to walk down and bang. The reason why I speak, again, yeah, which won't happen here at all, as a matter of fact. And as a matter of fact, it doesn't happen in any of the schools currently here now, because we're able to manage the students very safely.
Thank you. Glad I asked. But the, the moral of the story was, we're talking a very short window of time, under, say, twenty minutes. So twenty minutes in the morning and maybe about thirty in the afternoon, because it'll be a little more flex on the ceiling, the pickup.
Could, could you just explain the stagger schedule that you have in mind?
What I, what I, so what I'm understanding, there's really two ways to look at a stagger schedule. The, the stagger schedule that has been discussed currently is that bussing, busing students transition anywhere between five or ten minutes prior to walkers or pickups. And they are loaded on the bus and out they go. And then we, then the walk, then, actually, the pickups come a little bit later, maybe about five minutes. Okay, depending on how your school, every school is set up differently. If that's, if, okay, so there's one way we stagger, but generally speaking, everyone is coming in at the same time and everyone is leaving at the same time. And we try to replicate that model as best we can over at the middle high school, currently in this building, by all elementary drop-offs happen in the rear of the building. Okay, so we've replicated that to show that the, the cars will come into the rear of the building. No one mixes buses and cars. It's the number one thing that you do, we do not mix both. If we're talking about a staggered schedule in terms of there are so many children that, you know, that you couldn't possibly, you know, transport them either safely or just period, the staggered schedule would go something like, K, you know, K one, two would start, you know, forty-five minutes earlier than three, four, or five. I mean, something to that effect, and, and I, I think that's what people have been alluding to. I have to tell you, and again, I don't mean to throw these numbers, but they're real numbers, seven hundred and ninety-one students in twenty minutes. We are looking at five hundred and forty, if you use today's numbers, because some of those kids will be in that school, so they're not even three yet. So if you talk about five hundred and forty-one, five hundred and forty-one kids, of course we can do it. We do it every day. They do it every day.
Thank you. Can you, if I ask some more, any more questions before I open up for the audience?
Just one quick, just one quick question about, is there any plan of potential long-term parking of an additional, you know, area where there could be, if, you know, two years, five years from now, you say, okay, we really need a few more parking spaces? Is there any place for that to be, you know, any thought or any look forward to that? I'm looking at you only because I do.
Sure.
You do the short, the short strokes there.
There has been light discussion on that. There hasn't been any apparent area that has come to the front of, with the school building committee, where, where somebody's offered in, where it said that there's an area there to park. We feel that we have substantial parking on site to satisfy the school for, for, and for special events, parking will be better than it exists today because of the one-way setup. There'll be more parking spaces. So that's, that's general...
Well, because at one point, somebody had mentioned about paving the common and making that a parking lot, so I was ensuring that that was...
Kids don't, so we don't wanna be there.
Just making sure.
We have some opposition to that, John.
The original plan that the school building came up with required the taking of the police station area as a site for, to accommodate the school. Is there any chance that that would be the site that you would choose to, or if you needed additional?
We, if I could answer that one, we never had a plan to take the police station lot. That was never something...
It was discussed.
It was discussed that if the police station, the police station had been searching for quite some time for alternate locations, that it was, it made pretty clear to us as we were zeroing on Templeton Center, that they were studying, the idea was to expand, fix it, expand the parent location.
That seems like the only option that would happen.
Yeah, I think what we've looked at is, if the town ever grew significantly and you needed to add another wing, that's been a question that came up to us, where would that be? And that would probably be the only logical place, police would move to the Baldwinville School or somewhere else that made sense, and then that would give some room.
You really have no room to expand anything there.
Yeah, we, we've got capacity within this building for normal expansion, but if the town really was to, to, you know, fifty percent, hundred percent in size, that would be different.
Growing is part of education, it's part of, it's indicative of, I mean, we know how many, how our schools have grown over time, so.
All right, anybody else on the board have any other questions for the audience? Kristoff?
Just as we're talking about the busing area, there's a question that we've asked a few times to the, the new folks here, and I wanted to see if the superintendent would comment on it, is that what happens if we have, the whole plan is based on seventy percent of the kids using the bus? My first question is, how many, what percentage of the kids use the bus now? And then what happens if a few years go along and we have fifty percent of kids using the bus instead of seventy percent?
Currently, I, I don't know, I know that the study was done in terms of the bus use, I think, the left, the full year.
Do we have, I don't know. Sure, the, the current bus utilization was approximately between seventy and seventy-five percent for kinder, for kindergarten through fourth grade. Fifth grade was lower, it was in the line of about fifty to sixty percent. And the way we understood that was that, that was likely an anomaly because of the fifth grade being in this building with the older kids, where the parents likely wanted to drop them off and not have, fifth grade is bused with seniors in a bus. So that's why, that was our, our understanding of how that was. And we would envision there being somewhere around a seventy, seventy-five, maybe upwards of eighty percent of the, of the students who take buses.
Sure, and we've talked about this, Peter, a few times. My question is, but what if there isn't that usage? Because the kids don't have to take the bus, yeah.
So I can speak to that. So it happened this year. The Phillips and Bus, Bus Ten, as a matter of fact, the high school, middle school was, was, was getting full. So we do things like split runs. So what happens is the Phillips and Run, of course goes the Phillips, but it also comes up through Baldwinville. So what happens is they do the Phillips and Run, up they go, back down, pick up Phil, pardon me, pick up the kids in Baldwinville, swing back around. So instead of paying, you're paying for ten buses, you get eleven runs, so welcome. So I mean, so the fact is that we can do, we do those things, and we do that a lot. And so we split, we will, we'll split runs, and it's, it's very common to do that.
Okay, I think the angle that I'm looking at it though is that their drop-off, the design calls for a drop-off pattern on Wellington and South based on a certain amount of kids being dropped off in the morning. That certain amount of kids could go up by seventy percent, and the design's based on the percentage of kids.
Okay, so, so I would say to you that the contingency would be the split run, and I, I, what I'm hearing you say is that poor kids wouldn't use the bus, they would be dropped off. Then I would, then certainly, then you start looking at stagger starts, you start looking at those type of, those type of situations. I mean, I, again, it's hard for me to, to answer the question of the unknown, just like with the drop-off, you know, perfectly, again, seven hundred and ninety-one kids have never been dropped off at this middle high school before. And so it took us three days, four days, to figure out, with the help of the police department and et cetera, to figure out, okay, what does that mean for us? And that took a couple of days to figure out. We, we tweaked a few things, we did a few things, and now it's, it's in good shape. It's hard for me to answer that without seeing the actual problem. If you're talking about the total volume of cars doubling or increasing by ten or fifteen percent, or something to that effect, we'd have to look at it, stagger starts. But I will say to you, that drop-offs are, you know, in a situation in which it is, because I think that people have the impression that when you drop your child off, that, no offense, but we allow your parents to get out, we do not allow that to happen. We wave, they come out, and off they go. If, if they need to stop in the school for business, that's the parking, obviously the parking lot's more, they come in for business, there is no hug, goodbye, no offense, there is, we don't have time for that, it's unsafe, they drop them off, we wave, they're good hands, and off they go. So it's hard for me to answer your question without actually seeing the situation and knowing exactly what, you know, what, what grades or how many, what time.
Sure, I just wanted to comment.
Yeah, thank you.
Typically, typically, I know at Templeton Center, the parents would go in with the students and leave their cars on the side of the road.
There's a, I would just certainly say there's been a change in that, that thought process.
New sheriff in town.
Hmm?
New sheriff in town, ain't happening no more.
They certainly can come in if they have business, don't get me wrong, they're not coming in to drop off their kids and saying goodbye. It's, it's, it's a steady flow.
Preschoolers and young kids, I can understand the parents wanting to make sure they get safely into the school.
We currently have sixty-four kindergartens roughly, I'm probably off, I'm sure they'll yell at me later. They, the majority of them are dropped off by their parents, and all of them get out of the car, we wave, goodbye, and off they, and in they come.
That's something new there.
All right, I'm going to, okay, here comes a part where I throw people out, okay? When somebody's talking to the audience and everybody can't hear them, then they're gone, all right? Just trying to keep it so everybody can hear. And I will not take the same question twice. If you're not listening, you're not gonna hear it the first time, and you won't know it's been asked until I tell you, you can't ask that question, okay? So we'll start with, Mr. Sutscher, did you have a question, sir? I'm gonna start with Rudy down here in front, he's been waiting long enough for us.
You know, with all respect to everybody's idea on this planning board, I would like to tell you, you know, in the early thirties, I used to ride my bicycle around the common over and over again. I'd go by the soldier, and I got such admiration just going around that soldier. And over the years, we had thirty-six minute men from Templeton go to Concon and Lexington, they trained right on the common. And they used wooden rifles with lanterns on the end of them, training on the common. And it's hearsay that some of them got to Lexington and Concon first. I went to Concon and Lexington at a library to find proof of that. I couldn't find any, but it's all hearsay. And that is why you probably see my minute in, in the common. I would like to see Templeton become a historic village. And I, when I bought all my property there, I kept that in mind. Now, I own all that land behind all the housing on Boynton Street. I would like to see that become part of the common, it would be like a big horseshoe. It would be the nicest common in New England. With my intention that the boys in Templeton could use the back land for their, working on their eagle badges, and they could have teepees out there, and nobody could wash them. That's why I got George Pucci's house, my other white house, and when I designed my water wheel, keep it in mind the significance of a historic town, because everything would run by a water wheel. And everybody says my house is like a museum now. And even now, I'm making two Indians to put in a tree line behind George Pucci's house. And I want a zigzag trail going up to the historic center. Because in that seventeen sixty, they had a twenty-dollar bounty if they shot an Indian behind the front barn. And that's why I keep in mind the historical significance of our town, of Templeton. And we just gotta look ahead and not destroy it. It'd be a shame. When I bought my house on the common, the first thing I did was make a parking lot in the back. Same thing in Amy Templeton. Right now, as I look in the common, I watch my water wheel go, I see the parking lot on Baldwinville Road, all the cars are lined up there, double parking, and then they come down Boynton Street one way now. Some of them go so fast, I think they're going forty and fifty miles an hour down there. It's, it's, it's against all the rules of safety, and that's why I think we should look further into a location for all of that. Templeton Common is like a diamond, let's not destroy it. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Mr. Barnes?
I got a couple of questions. Why is the blinking school zone lights, I'm wondering whether they'll be located, and whether or not they're going four, four, seven, or are they gonna be under the school?
You're not, you carry that one, is that you?
Yeah, so we don't have that detailed design, I mean, typically there's, we'll follow the, given TCD standards, there's guidelines for that, we'll follow them, and typically they go under the school hours and they're off.
They're off, yeah. I get, like, two other questions.
Yeah, that's fine, go, George.
One of them is, just because I haven't heard from Bud on this, if weather, if it's good about the snow removal on the site? Because obviously they're not gonna be able to keep the snow on the site like they have in the past.
I'm sorry, are you directing?
Yes.
That's, that's fine. I mean, we keep, we're, Mr. Caspian and Bud, I mean, that's a school, it'd be a school that just saw removal was what we refer to.
There was some discussion, we talked about that during one of our meetings, and it was indicated that the school department is gonna have some type of equipment to clean in the area where they're, they receive their goods and services. And we're gonna clean it like, we clean these, uh, the, again, the school now. I mean, we plow, we put the snow where we can, and when, if we have a heavy winter and it requires snow removal, we go in and remove the snow. I mean, we do what we have to do.
So it's mostly open and not private property?
Uh, no, we don't like to put any snow on.
Well, what, what year you did?
That was a bad year, George. Bad year for George anyways.
My other question is just, just so unclear, during construction, they will, the construction people will not be parking private vehicles on, on straight parking? Is that gonna be, are they gonna keep it off the street?
I would leave that to the chief, I mean, as far as, I, I don't believe it's any different if I went up there and parked my car on the side of the road as long as we parked, correct, chief?
It's gonna be a lot of private vehicles, Paul.
Yeah, if I could, chief.
Right, sure.
Yeah, we've got, in the requirements, we will not allow them to park on the streets. They'll have the availability on-site, or they're gonna have to park off-site and take shuttles back and forth, but we think we've got enough space on-site to accommodate.
So it has been addressed, okay. Thanks, George. Mrs. Snapp?
Yeah, I haven't heard anybody talk about where handicapped students will be dropped off. Is there a specific spot on that map you can point to to show me when somebody pulls up with a handicap van and unloads that handicapped child on the right side of the vehicle, where would we get out? My concern is, is basically somebody unloading a wheelchair, anyway, traffic.
There's handicap parking spaces. I'm not going to point to it, but if you look at the buses on the left side right there, about halfway up in that parking area right there, there's handicap parking right there to support.
That parking lot.
There's two of those spots, and one of those spots is a van handicap space, there's a handicap ramp across the walk, and then the handicap accessible route into the building. On the south side of the school, adjacent to the police station lot, the first few spaces there are also handicap accessible, there's the inaccessible spot there as well, there's a handicap accessible route from those spaces.
So all of those handicapped parking spots you're talking about are for handicapped only and do not go in your, how many counts of parking spots?
No, they're included in the count, but they are handicap only.
But they're not to be used other than handicapped?
That's correct.
So how many of them were there?
I believe there's two in one lot up top and two in one of the lots, it was four.
Okay. On the drop offs on Wellington itself, is there a barrier that the traffic will flow into to give the children a barrier when they get out of the right side of the barrier into traffic, that they won't be exposed to moving vehicles?
The children, as they come off the South Road, are actually, all the children that go to this school, which is an elementary school by law, have to be in the backseat of the car, they cannot be in the front seat of the car. So they'll get out of the car on the curb side door. So they won't be allowed to get out on that curb side door.
Okay, so can you explain to me how they will get out of the curb side of the car in a minivan that has a right side door on? Do they climb over the driver? A lot of kids in a lot of minivans with right doors, some at both doors on both sides?
Okay, well, there's, your question about the physical barrier, there isn't. If there's a minivan that does come in, a minivan that does come in on that side there, there's a buffer between the drop off area and the travel lane in front of the school that's over eight feet. So there's an eight-foot area between the edge of the parking space where the minivan doors would open and where the travel, the travel way is where the cars would be traveling.
Does that area include the bike?
No, the bike is on the opposite side.
So you've got eight feet, 11 feet, and a five-foot bike lane?
Correct.
And a bar?
In the parking area.
Okay.
Ross, I did?
Yes.
Anybody else have any questions, sir?
Hi, I told me to enjoy a man row, I'm a part of that actually. I have a couple of comments and questions. First, do you all know how many comments the peer review that you paid town taxpayer dollars for had, how many comments of Whitman and Bigum, I think it is, how many comments they had total? About 55, 60? How many of those were to deal with traffic, the traffic patterns? Two, okay? My point of saying that is, you commissioned someone to be your experts on the site. If you're not going to take their advice or take their thing, why do you pay our town money for that? That's point one. I wasn't going to call out people by name, and I do this with respect. Mr. Buscetti, you made a comment earlier about there's got to be a better plan. Do you know what that better plan is other than moving the school to the site? You've heard from the lawyer, and, I'm sorry, that that's not an option. We move the site, though all money's gone, we'll all be long gone before we're able to build this again. The traffic engineer here, we paid, the town has paid their money to do this site plan, it's not free. In fact, every time they come up to this town, we're paying for that. I don't believe the traffic engineer did a plan that was just good enough. He designed a traffic pattern that was the best for this site. He's showed you the analysis. What facts do you have to say he's wrong? What qualifications do you have to say he's wrong? I asked you three weeks ago if any of you had traffic engineering degrees, the answer was resoundingly no. It's not a knock on you, you all have your professions and I respect that. Further, the town attorney said, if we go to court, we're going to lose. I find it offensive that you would vote no, that have the town paid probably two to three million. The $1.1 million a ton is just an escalation of what they call the cost of money. It's an inflation factor. It does not take into account the fact that materials could go up, they could go down, but not likely. The cost for the litigation of the town to sue itself, which is an unbelievable embarrassment to us as a town, as this whole process sort of has been. So I would respectfully ask, if you're thinking of voting no and you're going to cost me more tax money, I would ask that you would abstain, because you're not voting what is best for the town, you're voting what you have for your personal interest. If you can tell me facts and why you're saying no, I'll respect that. But if you're just voting no because you don't think it's the right site, or because you live up this street, I'm sorry, gentlemen, but that's not a good enough reason. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Can I comment on that, Greg?
Yeah, hang on. Frank?
Yeah, I'm going to comment on this very lightly, because I'm not making this a personal indebted between me and you, and I don't expect you to make it a personal indebted to me. I'm voting on my conscience, like I have a vote, or like anybody else, nothing personal, nothing to gain.
I don't think.
What, you just did?
All right.
That's all.
No, I just asked you a question.
I answered you.
No, I said, do you have any facts to say that this plan is incorrect? You said there's got to be a better plan. My question to you, sir, was, do you have a better plan? Have you commissioned a better plan?
I asked the traffic engineer, which is the one I respect, does he have a better plan? I don't, I'm not a traffic engineer, Bud Chase is not, the chief is not, the fire chief is not, but yet, you're picking me out of the crowd. I didn't interrupt you at all when you were talking, so I like to have the same respect. So I asked the traffic engineer, these other people, not knocking Bud or anybody, they got the same amount of experience as I have, maybe not a college degree in traffic. This is the man that has, and he's the one that should be able to straighten it out. I just asked a question. Nothing personal, I have nothing to gain, I have my conscience to vote, I would hate to see me helping this town spend $40 million and be part of a disaster. I'm not hoping for a disaster, I hope it works, but my name may even be on there. That's all.
Was your opinion of voting to allow the town?
I'm only one vote.
$2 million to sue itself?
I'm only one vote. As many.
Um, Carrie, I just want to make sure, can you please correct the dollar amount of what the town is actually spending for this project, and that's not $3 million?
Jonathan, you can try me on that.
Yes, so.
Money spent to date as well?
Yeah, so the total approved project is 47,563,000. The MSBA funding almost 23 million, the net cost to the town is $24.6 million, I think that's the point you're making?
Yes, thank you.
And money spent to date?
Uh, about $3 million to date.
About $3 million to date. And if the school does not go, that's a non-reversible cost, correct?
I don't know, because some of it's been reimbursed already, I don't know how the MSBA, if it were to stop now, I haven't asked that question.
Okay, all right.
I've never seen that happen.
Diane, pick up a tab, anyway, she said.
Um, I will, no, I was just, when the comment was made about not being reimbursed, well, that's not true, I have looked at it, and some of it has been reimbursed by the MSBA. I cannot give you exact numbers, but I have been intricately looking at that as the OPM is aware and other people, so some of it has been reimbursed.
My statement was reflecting the fact that if the project does not continue on.
Yeah, then it will have to.
We, that would be on the whole, that full $3 million with nothing to show, Bud.
That's, I'm not sure.
That was my point, okay.
Never seen it, so.
Coming at you different in a second. Dennis?
We take out a loan for $47 million or $48, whatever.
24.
No?
No. You take out a loan for the net amount, so you take out a loan for the $24.6 million.
That's all?
That's it. It's pay as you.
Every year for the next 28 years, we'll make a payment?
All right. First of all, I have to, I've got to stop the conversation about the total money and how we're going to finance it, how long we're going to pay for it, because we're way off subject of plane of woods, purview, okay? So, we're all going to pay for it, how's that? I'm going to go with the gentleman in the back, we'll get back to you, sir. Yeah.
Town council has said that the planning board under some amendment does not have the right to deny a vote of this use. Could town council explain, if they don't have the right to deny this, why is the matter before the planning board, and what is their vote being based on?
It's, we condition the plans is what it is. It's not. What were you going to say?
No, I don't want to interrupt.
The planning board is to review the plans and make sure the traffic pattern works and, you know, and safety issues and handicap spots where Mrs. Smidt brought whatnot. Taking the school aside, if we look at a shopping mall, we look for, you know, entrance and egress and fire protection, and it's the same things we're looking, just happened to be the school. But the Dover Amendment, if you wanted to, Mr. Hudson, you can explain to him, it's a.
No, yeah, I agree with the chairman, the planning board's role is to review the project for things that are relevant to the criteria in the site plan review, which are the kinds of things that the chairman just mentioned, and to impose reasonable conditions on the project. That's the role of the planning board in site plan review.
I would just suggest that that's the council's best opinion, not a statement of fact.
An opinion that there is absolutely no question about, it's a statute.
Your expert opinion, right.
Anything in the law.
Right, right, but it's, so I'm not, just not saying it's not a statement of fact, that's why it is here, because the board does have to vote on it. The council's saying if we vote no, he's probably correct that it would be overturned because we've overstepped our bounds. So I'm not disagreeing or agreeing, I'm just making a statement.
But we do have to vote.
I don't know anything about that.
Yes, the money thing is kind of out of our purview, so.
We don't deal with it.
Anyone else in the audience have questions? Yes, sir?
As most of you know, one of the last campaigns I was at, the bond rating for the town capital is kind of in the tank. So we can borrow money, but we do it at a much higher interest rate. The ability to go forward with this project and face a large debt like this will do wonders for the towns, not only your property values, but for the town's bond rating and our ability to borrow money in the future when we decide we need a new fire station, or we need a new police station, or we need a new senior center, or whatever it is we need, it's going to help the town in the long run, in that fact.
Mr. Barnes?
If we give that benefit, it's 30 years down the road, does that still work?
You can ask for.
That's false. Yeah.
Okay, that, the statement that you don't see the benefit for 30 years is incorrect, you can ask for, if you haven't paid off a certain amount of money, you can ask for a review of your bond rating, it doesn't take 30 years to have to pay for that, that's incorrect.
Okay. All right. Getting back to the planning board issues, please, okay? Sir?
Matt Bellinger, this is a question for the town council. Just wondering, so maybe, maybe Mr. Buscetti will answer this question also. If the planning board's role here is to come up with conditions, what are we voting about? Why do you even have to vote at all?
What do you mean? I think it goes back to, I think it goes back to what I.
You want to answer this one?
Well, I, I made a comment when you left the room, I think, the board has, can vote yes and no, that's why it's before the board. The question is whether or not it oversteps our legal authority based upon what town council has explained to all of us, including the audience. Again, it's not a statement of fact, it's a factual opinion on the legal council's opinion. I think.
It's the fundamental nature of site plan review in a situation like this, is that it involves the imposition of reasonable conditions. It's not a special permit, for example. If there were, if it was a use that you needed a special permit for, then the special permit grant you can deny the special permit if the criteria are not met. That's a different animal. That's like apples and oranges. That would be a special permit, this is site plan review, so for a use that is allowed as a right. So that's why you can't deny it, you can only reasonably condition it. And in this situation, we have, one of the reasons why I'm so certain of this, is because that, what I just said applies even for a regular use that's allowed as a right. Here we have, on top of that, we have a use that is exempt under the Dover Amendment, because it's an educational use. That's why it's so certain that it can't be denied, it can only be reasonably conditioned.
And say that were the actual case of the Dover Amendment, which you're a lawyer, I'm not, I know a lot of lawyers, and they all think about basically everything, so I'm, since I'm not a lawyer, I'll take your word for that, on that piece. And my question is, if that were the case, we would be voting on conditions to the site plan and maybe tweaks to make it safer this way and that way, there wouldn't be nothing before the board as to whether or not to approve it?
No, that is what's before the board, in my opinion.
See, I think I can answer that. The thing is, Mr. Blair, how many of these, how many planning board meetings have you attended in the last two years since we've been studying on this plan? Is this your first one?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then if you were to come to all the meetings, you'd know what the planning board's been doing for the last year or two on this project. And so the final plan and all our work is reflected on that plan, all our comments are reflected on that plan. So next time you want to come to a meeting and change or doubt what we do, start at the beginning of the meeting, not the end?
I'm not doubting any of your opinions, Mr. Buscetti. So what I'm asking is, it doesn't make any, all your comments and all your changes, and that makes sense if he's right, I just don't understand why we're even having, oh, that's just a question.
Okay.
You should understand why there needs to be approval if what he's saying is right.
It's basically an infrastructure adjustment, it's limited. In other words, we have to make sure the stormwater management is in place. You can't build a structure, a mall, or school, or whatever, without addressing your stormwater. You need, your parking, your certain amount of green space, these are all things that have to be met. The educational use is trumped by the Dover Amendment. It's no different than, we almost had a drug rehabilitation center in the center of Ballingville, and they could be there today if they didn't back out. That was under the Dover Amendment, so I think this is definitely a lesson of all those evils under the Dover Amendment.
And in that case, I mean, you know, all I'm saying is like, if they vote no, we'll go to court. I just don't see that that would actually precipitate in court if this Dover Amendment thing applied, and I certainly don't appreciate it. I have this, like, a right to be here, does anybody else?
Of course you do.
Right to speak to anybody else?
Yeah.
You're just totally, you're little, me, questioning for not coming.
Well, you're asking what we were doing here and why we're voting, so I explained to you what we're voting on. We're voting on to something that we've been working on for two years, all right? Mr. Barnes?
Just, might be a little helpful, what are some of the reasonable conditions that you could set? Are there things like a dedicated spot for a handicapped drop off or something like that?
That is, I'm going to chime to our peer review agent, glad to be here, Wes Fless, who works for Whitman and Bigum. Wes, would you chime in with Mr. Barnes's question, please?
That would be one of the conditions that you can put on there. And reasonable is, I guess that's the problem with any condition, is what's reasonable, and that's where really attorneys a lot have to fight at the end of the day, is what's reasonable. It's for the board to put on any conditions they feel like. Say if Mr. Buscetti does want to vote yes on it, and the way he votes yes on it is to put all kinds of conditions on it, well, others' conditions are reasonable, and that's where the attorney's really fighting a lot about what. fighting a lot about what's reasonable. So your condition...
So, say they said, no, we want the drop-offs across the street, and...
Well, that, that, that must be, that's a reasonable condition. But if they say we want it to go in two ways, even though the police department says it wants to be one way, that's, that might not be considered reasonable. There's other things that we see in the past. Yeah, there's, there's a number of things that may make it unreasonable. A lot of times it's costly, and that's just really what comes, at the end of the day, why it's unreasonable. So, this Bouchette, who operating example is down the street from on Balling Road, they had approval for the...
The planning hospital.
The police guy, I'm sorry.
That would be reasonable, wouldn't it?
So they're putting on, and that's why they walk away.
Uh, Mr. Attorney, if I could just address that briefly, the, the fact that it is exempt education use under the Dover amendment is relevant to the issue of what's reasonable, that what kind of conditions could be imposed. It limits greatly the amount, the, um, the kinds of conditions that could be imposed. And, uh, cost is one of the issues, so, so really, in my opinion, anything that would threaten the funding of the project, um, it would be a significant change from what the last building authority has approved, in my opinion, would be an unreasonable condition.
So do you think there are major changes, and things like that, you...
Yes.
Mr. Attorney? You all set, George?
Yeah.
Uh, gentleman in the back?
It's critical, although in the sixteen-year drive, what would be the questionable we voted on today?
The, it's not, it's, it's the actual, what would be voting on tonight would be the actual, the acceptance of the plans as submitted.
I thought they were already accepted.
I'm sorry?
With the already acceptance, isn't that what we all voted for?
Uh, town meeting voted to build a school. This is a procedural along the way, no different than a conservation meeting and going to building inspection, and so on and so forth, this is the, this is the process.
Any questions? Tonight's about which way the traffic's gonna go?
Tonight's, um, we already opened the public hearing, we've had a few meetings, the board, um, voted it down, we said we voted to reopen the public hearing, tonight is the reopening of that public hearing for reconsideration of accepting the plan as submitted for the project to move forward. I hope that answers your question.
Pretty much. So, did we get to vote, or you, just you guys get to vote today?
Yes, we did, sorry.
So, so, this is gonna get my point. We're gonna tell you because of that, who, I guess, I don't know, can I ask this question? Who voted yes and who voted no? Mr. Barnes, a yes vote? Who didn't want to accept it in the first place?
We can ask, but I, I think we just try to, we're trying to keep tonight's meeting fresh, informative, and staffed, and...
Well, there's that many of these, and the rest of you are, you know, proud of you, but, uh...
No, it's fine.
I'll tell you what, I, I would like to know who gets to come up with the election. And I got to build it a vote for us, and be based on one people today. So I would like to tell my...
Stick around. Yeah, I mean, we're gonna vote.
You're gonna, you'll see it. You're gonna see it.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's not behind closed doors or anything like that, it's here.
Oh, is that what you meant? Yeah, if you vote tonight, he's gonna see it. All right, we're gonna vote.
He's gonna see, yes. You'll see.
Yeah, okay.
So, if, if someone was to vote no, shouldn't it be their responsibility to say, X, Y, and Z would cause us to make a yes vote for me, the conditions would have to be...
We don't have that method, but we, we never, um... Can you answer that one?
Yeah, I can answer that. So, if, if the entire board issued denial, they had denial, they would have to give their reasons for denial. But since the board did not issue their denial, they agreed to reopen the public hearing, there was no reason why they issued denial.
Correct.
The second item...
Because it wasn't, it was not unanimous vote, too, so that wasn't...
Good, because I think a lot of people here believe that this is a yes or no for the school. And I don't think that's the case, it's, for the site plan itself, it's going there, so what takes, so if you disagree with the site plan, other than the fact that it happens to be in that location, what makes, what, if it was voted, say, four to three no, like it was the last time, shouldn't the people that vote no say, I voted no because I need to see this? And, and, and to me, a different location's not a this, it's, you know what, I'd like to see twelve more parking spaces, or like Mr. Barnes said, uh, handicap, or whoever said the handicap. I think there's a gentleman out here with a handicap or whatever. Isn't that really what's going on here, so this isn't an end to the process?
I'm gonna, what, John, can you chime in as far as basically the, the ramifications of a no vote from the procedural and the funding that the state goes?
Yeah.
Am I asking that right?
Yeah. Yeah, I, I think there's a lot of questions going on, and a lot of discussion as to, as to what the, what's before the planning board, so what, i- i- in my mind, it's as simple, the planning board has authority to review what's being put forward, and as you've, you've heard the attorney and members of the planning board state, they have a responsibility to review plans, to make sure that they conform with certain criteria. So that's what's before them, just as we went before other boards and commissions, and, and will continue to go through various parties. If they were to say no, as they did last time, and to tell us what conditions, or to not take a vote, and to tell us to resolve something, that would be something, we've already had two iterations with a peer reviewer, who's done some pretty thorough reviews, came back, as we heard someone say, fifty-five comments, whatever it was, four pages of comments, that the design team went back and forth and worked over, and will continue to work to resolve whatever comes up from this group. If the group ultimately says no, that they won't approve this, then we would go to the courts. We would file an appeal through the court process, and we would take, we would sue the town, the town would sue the town. And then ultimately, as we've heard, we believe that we would prevail, that it would cost a lot of money. So I, I think that's the simple answer, is that, is that fair?
Yeah, I just, it's easier for you saying it than me saying it.
Yeah, can I, okay. So, Charles Carroll, I voted down the first time, voted this project down the first time. One of the issues to, can answer your question, is, so when I look at the project, in my opinion, I don't feel there's enough parking. So, when I look at it, I say, okay, where can we get more parking? One of the issues is, there's really no place for more parking. As we progress, when, you know, if this gets proved, if we put conditions in, one of the conditions may be additional parking, one of the conditions may be, uh, you know, snow removal, uh, safety issues, things like that. So, our job is to really make sure that this project, when it, if, if it's built when it's built, is as safe as it can possibly be. That's one of the things that we do. So I look at it, and one of the question, one of the reasons I voted it down in the beginning was, like I said, I have a lot of concerns for safety issues, I have concerns for long-term expansion, um, you know, the, where are the additional parking spaces, where there are, you know, lack of fields, or just small outdoor play area. So, when I voted it down, I looked at it and I said, is this the best project that Templeton could have? And I don't see that. I understand that we're way past that, and I understand that there's, this has been an ongoing process that has taken way longer than it ever should have. But it's still very difficult to just sit there and say, yep, don't step it, pass it on, because, you know what, the state law says you can't deny it.
Well, no, I agree, but let me ask you this. You say there should be more parking, but the parking engineer, or the traffic engineer said there's enough parking. Does the plan need state requirements for open spaces for children? If it didn't, then I could understand your objection to the fact. Would we rather have a ten-acre field? Sure, of course. But if it's two acres and that, I'm just using it as an example, then as long as it meets the state requirements, your personal opinions would really shouldn't factor into your decision?
I agree with you, however, I, there are no actual state that I know of for a field or, you know, outdoor activities, I don't know if there's any building code to that.
Wes, would you care to chime in? Everybody knows, like I said, Wes Fless, he's, he actually works for Woodman and Bigum, who the town has hired to review the plans submitted by the applicant, who happens to be the town also, but for clarification purposes, okay? So Wes, if you don't, you don't mind?
To continue with the gentleman in the back room, too, you asked a question about what they're gonna vote on, do they vote yes or no? Okay, so if they vote no, they can just vote no again, and then, and like, so say, explaining before, in their denial, they have to have some list of reasons they deny. But if they approve it, they have to work through a list of conditions. And I know we've already, at least the firm that I work with, have already given them, given the board some conditions as part of our review. As part of what's happened in the last two meetings, it sounds like there should be additional conditions placed on the plan that the board needs to work through. So I think this process, we might not see a vote tonight, because there, the conditions need to be worked through, as Mr. Carroll said. For him to make that leap to say, no or yes, there might have to be conditions added to it, maybe that we have to look at any future parking space on the site. And it's something that, since the last meeting and tonight, Mr. Look and I have already talked about, is there other space on the site to possibly add? Future parking spaces, that might not be ideal, but can you put future parking spaces other than the site? For the guys to get open spaces, more requirement for the open spaces, not open spaces, but there is requirements. So here's the problem of part two, with the, addressed by Mr. Carroll, is you can park it. Right now, there's nothing in the town zoning that tells you how many parking spaces you need. Right now, the designers are going off what the school's telling them to need. There are other guidelines that we can go by, uh, but right now, the school is basically telling them, obviously, that's why they're at that number. And that's the point being said.
Sir?
I actually, I don't think, Mr. Carroll, however, how much more money would that possibly just keep turning me down? How much more money would you spend that?
Well, when I sit here, I look at the fact that the town is going to be spending twenty-four-point-six million, as well as the state's gonna be spending an additional twenty-three. I wanna make sure that Templeton's money is protected. So when I sit here, when we go through these processes, we make sure that everything is done right and correct, so that the long term of the town, we do get the best money, of the best, best value for our money. So, when I sit here, when I look at all the plans, when I vote, it's actually invested in the trust of Templeton. I'm a lifelong resident, I've been here thirty-six years, I love this town, and I will stand by it through and through. I'm a graduate of the Gansett, and I think that we have a great town, and I wanna make sure it stays a great town.
Do you have to vote for how long?
I believe s- like, seven years, six, seven, eight years?
And, I don't know how to say this, but, you know, we have, basically, what you've put before us, you guys have put this before us, and you guys keep going back with what you're saying. You had how many years to prepare for this? And we sit here again.
It's actually out of our purview.
We spend time and our money to sit here again.
That's...
What you're doing. And look, you know what, that's how I see it.
Just like, just like, and clear, this is the first plan that's ever made this far. It's the nine years...
Been two years to go on?
No.
No.
Because this bill was in April that you...
Yeah, this bill was in April, that's what I'm saying.
If there's a message to be delivered, we have to vote for it, we're not spending all of our money. How are these guys to come out again? They spend their time.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I don't know if this is the right time, or perhaps the right procedure is, to, to vote no and then have to write the denial, but maybe we could jump ahead a little bit, and if there are any reasonable conditions that the board has, that they would like to discuss with the audience, or at least mention, and I know Mr. Bigum said parking, if those are the reasonable conditions, then let's hear, we need five more parking places, and let's throw it back to the people that designed it, and see what they can come up with, rather than say, well, if we don't like it, we'll tell you what the conditions are, what are the reasonable conditions that need to be imposed to make everybody down there happy, and to make the site go forward?
That's definitely not part of the public hearing process.
Actually, it has to be brought up now.
The conditions?
The conditions, yeah.
You have the right to negotiate with the activity.
You can vote no, and then we can...
I voted yes, I've just tried and be procedural.
All I'm saying is that, I mean, that's what we normally do, is we just don't, we have a big audience, but, I mean, we've already discussed the, the parking, I know Wes has had dialogue with Peter, it's about, is there any more spots on site? Let's start here, does anybody on the board have any more questions for the applicants and engineers? Okay, guys?
I just, I kind of forgot what the heating system is gonna be for the school.
The what?
The heating system? When we talked about the, the heating, uh, when we were describing the plans, we talked about what the heating source is gonna be, I guess I should say.
It's, it's gonna be fuel oil.
Fuel oil?
Correct.
The delivery for that would be where?
There, there will be underground fuel oil tanks with a double containment, um, system, and all the piping will be double contained, it'll have leak detection within the system as well. Everything according to state...
Those tanks will be located where?
It'll be located outside the service area. My point is, right where the, where the truck's packed up, and to just, to drop off in that area right there.
Okay. What about, uh, trash disposal?
Same spot, there'll be two compacters that'll be located in that same area.
Anything else, Dennis?
I guess, no.
Okay, we'll go right down the road. Kristoff? A...
I, I do have a comment, but it's not a question.
Right, let her rip.
Okay, just, just, just as some of the people in the audience, is that I've been on the board for, um, eight years, and I think Charlie's been on the board for nine, Frank's been on the board for sixty, I don't know how long I'm gonna be here. We have a lot of experience sitting on this board, and we actually do this twice a month. And it's a big commitment, and we don't get paid, we listen to a lot of projects, we listen to a lot of cases, and we sign our name. When we put an approval on a project, we sign our name. So, if we approve this project and it goes out, it's our names on that project. There's nobody else in the town that approves it, nobody else that puts their name on the actual construction site plan review. The second thing I'm gonna say is that, in terms of something that I would request that would change my mind, before we close this public hearing the first time, I requested an impartial opinion, or a third opinion, from another engineering firm, like Wes, I, I know we've worked with Woodman and Bigum, but...
They work for you.
I know. But, but when I, when I get a bathroom renovation done at my house, I get three prices, and I think everybody does that. So... Can I finish talking?
Sure.
So, that was something that I requested from this board, I said, I'd like to get a third opinion on the engineering, specifically the traffic flow. This board voted against it, and that's fine. The third thing is that, in the whole time I've been on this board, we almost always make unanimous decisions. So, the fact that we're, we are a split decision, that we're having a lively discourse amongst ourselves, and with the engineers, and with the, the other folks involved in the plan of this project, that's, that, that's significant to us. This is a board that gets along well, that usually hashes things out over and over until we can come up with a unanimous decision. So I understand not everyone here does what we do all the time, sees what we do all the time, and had been here for all those decisions, but this is a hard thing for us to do, we're in a hard spot right now, and we're all trying to do the best that we can with it.
All right, Dennis, any last questions or comments in regards to the project itself?
I'd like to maybe request that we do the conditioning, well, the hearing is open.
Conditioning as in what? We have the original, do you have the original listing of conditions? Wes?
Actually, well, we have the public hearing, can I ask the chief a question, just so, regards to the traffic, I think it was asked the last meeting, and then the plan was denied, and I don't think the question was ever carried through. Chief Bennett, I know you talked about no parking on both, in South Road, the school side of the project, and then I know it was brought up at one of the meetings about putting no parking during school hours there.
Yes.
And I know it was, I think talked about possibly using that as a queuing area, or drop off during school hours, is that something that you would be in favor of, or would work with the...
If, if you remember how I stated it, I said that we would look at the traffic, once the building was completed, and if we needed to tweak things, we would.
Correct.
So if it came to a point where we decided that we had to put no parking on either side of the road to better accommodate traffic flow, then we'd address that at that time.
All right, so, so the reason I ask the question is, the concern came with the planning board, is that they put conditions on the traffic, they felt like they had no power to enforce that condition, because basically the selectmen make the final decision on any changes to traffic in the town, obviously with your recommendation.
Yes.
And so they felt, they put a condition on any of the traffic, they felt they had no way to enforce that condition in regards to traffic. So that's the reason I ask tonight, is, obviously, if they put those as conditions, would you be acceptable to help them enforce those conditions, or work with them to, to change those, if they saw those as being a condition during the operation of the school?
I would rather look at the problem as it evolves, and then address it.
And would they be able to take their concerns to you? Yes, selectmen, is that the best way to do it? And I guess, again, some of the members, again, had their concerns, because basically, once they make a vote, they felt like they have no way to enforce any of the conditions afterwards, and that's the reason I wanna make sure that that's fair, and how that process can work out. And that's the reason I want to make sure that that's fair, clear how that process can work out.
I would like to take their concerns to my office and then I would address it with more stuff.
Is that, at least that part of it, I think, I know one of the meetings that came up, the board had no power to make any conditions regards to any of the traffic.
Right, because we can't add or delete parking spots from the town property, outside of the school property, correct? Dennis, do you have something else?
No, my question, can we do the conditioning during the open hearing?
We're in open hearing, yeah, we can do it right now. And that's what I said, we already have a list of conditions that was supplied by, um, Witten and Bingham.
Do you have a copy of that available?
So are you, are you asking for a revision to that as far as adding what?
Well, I had a few things I wanted to add, I don't know, I'm sure I'll let people over too. Do you have a list of the ones that Wes gave us?
I do have a list, I'm going to read the initial questions.
Yes.
Can I, can I just ask procedurally, I thought we always put the conditions after we voted.
We can't, no, we have to vote, you have to vote with the conditions. And if you're going to get conditions, if you're, if you're going to, that's what I'm trying to give everybody.
No, I understand.
No, what I'm saying is, ask the questions now while, while the engineers and the representatives are here now versus losing more time if we end up extending it faster than I.
Wes, you can ask the town council.
No, I agree.
Town council, you would, you would suggest to make the conditions known before they vote on it, correct?
Well, well, it would normally be part of the motion, motion to approve the subject to such and such.
So Wes, would you use mine, spin it off to the.
Initially, we had six conditions, at least from the standpoint of our review. And I know Peter had agreed, most of them can chime in on them.
You guys have six in front of you?
Six in the rear.
You're getting them off right now?
Yep, so the first one had to do with test bed under the infiltration area in the parking lot. I think it's underneath a police station, which is the south of the police station. The second would make sure that the applicant submits the NPD's permit with the US EPA 40 days prior construction, just to stay in the protocol. Number three, that they apply for a permit with EEP for an underground injection well for the underground infiltration systems that they have up there. Four had to do with the removal of any of the play equipment or goalposts that they'd be salvaged and possibly used by the town later on. I think Peter had talked to the town about that, the town said whoever directs park will take that and use it where they see necessary. Number five had to do with the handicap space, the lack of handicap space in front of the businesses at the intersection of South Road and Bentley Road. And to make sure that they check with the building inspector on the infillability of having to do a handicap space.
Okay, what do you do with striping?
Correct, the way with stripe didn't show handicap space in the plan that we're giving, our understanding is if you make a change to any kind of stripe or anything that would park them, have to show a handicap space. Number six, any recommendations from the traffic study that from you or associates, if you're not that correct, but if correct. Were basically false. It didn't matter if there was one way or two way streets, they had recommendations for both ways. Obviously, right now it's going to be one way street, but again, say down the road it's a two way street, that the school come back and can make whatever recommendations we're going to have for, for two way streets or two way traffic. And I think was mentioned about the horseshoe drop off and so forth.
Okay, so now, with that being the condition set, is there any recommendation or any other wording? Or does anybody want to go to number seven?
And so I have a couple extra that, to start off with, to the board, I think one would be Mr. Carroll's comment would be additional parking. If there's a place that could be highlighted for additional parking, advise parking, however that is. I know Mr. Littman, I talked about the parking on this, west of the school right here. The parking along Wellington Road right now is an angle parking, which is ideal for pulling in and out a one way street. You could put more parking space there, there's 90 degree parking, but it's not ideal for back out into a street. So you could put more spaces there if you need to or not. So that could be possibly a future area that can expand parking if you needed to. With very minor adjustments to be taken there. Another spot that, and I know particularly, and I again briefly touched on before, it doesn't, it's not ideal, but if you needed to add spaces, you could possibly shift the playground over, most spaces there. Again, if you block during bus drop off, bus pickup, but if you put the principal, the vice principal and anybody, teachers that have to be there anyways with the bus drop, dropping off, pickup, you might be able to gain some more space. Again, not ideal, but if the issue, you know, comes up or the board feels that those are really what needs to be done, but gets approved, I don't know if that's necessarily a deal for it. And then I think that if, if the superintendent wants to chime in on that, or the principal wants to chime in, so I hear their feedback, you know, if they initially put out a location, that's something that if we do, obviously still helps. We have only the last, I have a couple more items. So that, I think those, obviously, Mr. Carroll, I think that, right, is what you're looking up, additional spaces.
What issues?
One of the body's members brought up an issue about the drop off up on South Road. And it was something that, the way it sets up, there's a, there's a breakdown lane, then there's your drop off and your travel lane separated. I don't know if there's a way that that can be raised out, is that something that can be there that's protected? Because if, you know, it's the same thing, and I think one of the members was kind of thinking the same thing, is if you have two children being dropped off, you're going to have to be dropped off toward South Road. Is there a way to raise that out? And I'm not sure if Mr. Chase would like to raise that on there anyways, but it's something that possibly it's not really a huge cost, but it might still protect, it might give you that protection for children drop off. And that's, everybody keeps talking about, we're trying to protect the children here.
But maintenance of any kind of curbs.
Well, that's what you asked Mr. Chase about. That's why we're asking Chase's opinion is, if you put an island there for in between the drop off there, is it something that you would be pleading against or something or?
I can see it being a maintenance problem.
And that's why a lot of people don't like to put islands there, but I was unsure.
That's correct.
But it might be something that you can do to that, or it's pretty cheap to put up there and put grass and apples like the chief's sort of that condition to secure. And it's actually, it's okay to add one of them. And another thing you can do is visual separation, whether it be strapping or, you know, a different type of care. Exactly, so, so you can still do, it should be a maintenance issue, but you can still do some treatment to visually separate, you know, where the children and the drop off would be a problem. Exactly, usually you have to walk the separation, because right now it's basically, you know, it's just strapping, it's two lines. You know, you can have somebody that does not, it's not familiar what's going on, they can come down, both lanes there, you can break that way. And that's the issue, so, from safety of manner. Might hopefully be some of the, I know the board members have concerns about, obviously your concern is child drop off there, maybe that's.
Yeah, and the safety, you definitely have to look at safety all the way around.
Striping is very cheap, it's just a. And then. At least for right now, then obviously.
Well, I, I just, on the issue of parking, you said there's no specific zoning currently in town for the number of parking spaces. There's no real requirements for the number of parking spaces. We're going by what the school has told us they need. I wonder if the condition might be that maybe everybody's done their job and this is all going to work? Maybe at the end of the first year, we revisit this and see what problems we've had with the police chief and see what problems we've had with the highway superintendent, if any. And then we can go back and say, maybe we need those five spaces that aren't ideal and then we add them as opposed to trying to determine how many more spaces we need now if there's no real zoning that tells us how many we have to have.
Because we always keep that in our site plan reviews as a condition, that we always exercise the right to revisit for that reason.
But to your, to your point, we've, we've made several changes to the parking lot with, again, just strapping. But the town has been ready to come in, we've put lines and arrows and all kinds, I mean, those, I realize we're not talking about Jersey barriers here, but those type of things can be done and of course will be done. We reassess almost on a daily basis, never mind yearly, so I think that those things can certainly be done.
We have no option though, as I look at this plan, for increasing them no matter what the situation is, if we need to or not. We've used every square inch of this lot.
Wes just gave us some examples.
I'd just like to do a suggestion, two spaces you could put in, two areas you could put in, I think I could add 25 more spaces. They're not ideal, you get 25 more spaces.
Where?
If you were to do 90 degree spaces along Wellington Road.
Oh, you're going to use them on the street then?
Well, no, right now you have parking that's along Wellington Road. They're angle spaces because angle spaces work better with one way traffic. The school said they only need 20 spaces for drop off for their program. And they put in 20 spaces. But if you need spaces down the road, you can make them all 90 degree spaces. It's not ideal to back out of a 90 degree space into a one way street, but you have enough area to do it. The other problem that obviously I think Mr. was probably telling too, is that it's a bike lane that we're trying not to impede. As I know, Mr. Chase was looking to have a bike lane for grant money, correct?
Well, we're looking at grant money, but that's not going to happen under complete streets. We can't make that.
So if the bike lane needs to go away, the bike lane can go away to accommodate the 90 degree parking spaces if you need them down the road, but you don't, right now the school's saying they only need the spaces on the plan. And like I said, you could put spaces up closer to the playground, it could be blocked by a bus drop off and bus pickup. But if you make it your principal and your vice principal, your teachers, you could, you could make it work, it's the idea.
Fair, pretty much answered that question, sir.
Now, getting back to parking again. How many non-student personnel are going to be in this school?
How many?
Hundreds and some?
No, no. It was like six, yeah, it was 68, I thought it was 71, I think, was the last, 68, 71. Roughly 70.
What percentage of those people are going to drive cars to work? And where they're going to put them? You can't put all those guys in 44 spaces or whatever you got.
There's not 44.
We have 88. 88 spaces.
You have 60.
There's 88 spaces, or 88 spaces in.
Including.
In the police department.
Including the police department.
You have 19. The design showed 19 on one side, 18 on the other. That equals 37. And you have 23 in the current playground.
There are two different lots. There's one across from the playground and there's one adjacent to the.
So to sum all, to sum all this up, when it comes to the parking and whatnots, it's really, it all boils down to the same thing we put on every single site plan review. And the planning board always reserves the right to revisit the site to make modifications, whether it be for parking, for pedestrian safety and refuge, you know, for dumpsters and so on and so forth. So that pretty much sums up everything everybody's talked about. Everybody's talking about it, but nobody has an answer, nobody has a number. So that takes care of all of that by doing what we always do. So what's the next thing you want to see on this that's, that's not already written down from our peer review?
All right, I think we need to have a fence along the north side boundary of this lot to screen off the houses on that side.
What side's fence you expect to hide a three story school with?
The boundary line between the property of the school and the country store, running all the way down up to Wellington Road to offer some protection from.
Isn't that, isn't that a vegetated?
It is vegetation, but it doesn't.
We'll let Peter answer that.
The backyard there of.
As currently constituted and the plans that you folks have, there is in fact a screen fence that starts on South Road on the north property line and continues all the way down through to Wellington.
It does.
Along the tree line.
All right. Do we need to have some kind of a boundary between the playground parking lot where the 23 spaces are and the bus driveway?
The playground is fenced in, correct? The playground is fenced in, guys.
It is fenced in, that area. Did somebody say something about there being an opening there for handicap individuals?
Handicap parking, is what you're saying?
No, no. Is there an opening in that fence? I mean, when he was questioning about the handicap van.
That's an 88 compliant, you're going to, any playground is going to have an 88 compliant, the whole school, the whole property is going to have the 88 compliant, including the playground, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct, all the playground areas are handicap accessible.
Well, there has to be an opening for people to get in it.
Yeah, I know, and also allows kids to run across there.
I know, but you can't.
Okay, is there anything else, Dennis?
I noticed the fire chief is here tonight, I don't know if he's ready to answer a question. We're having the need for a fire lane along the north, the south side of the school where it's going to be a three story building. You're going to have to have access to the third floor, I assume.
That was already cleared with all the engineers, they took our truck measurements and set it all up with areas, and we came up with 13 of them. As we, we, we met with the, with the fire chief, active fire chief, and we got the fire chief's equipment size, a 75 foot ladder, and we positioned it at different positions all around the school and made sure that there was access for, for, for a fire and we satisfied the fire, the active fire chief's concerns.
There won't be a need to maintain a fire lane there or will there be?
There's one area on the, on the east side of the building at the three story wing where we included a reinforced turf so the fire, fire engine can get on top of that if it has to.
During this construction phase, all equipment and all supplies should be maintained on site?
It will be on site. We already discussed that, Dennis.
Okay, that's.
The yes was yes, when you asked it earlier.
And what about work hours?
24, 7. You want to get it done or not?
Well, don't forget you're, you're, you're building within.
I'm kidding.
A matter of 25 to 30 feet of people's living rooms and bedrooms, so you're going to have to be a little bit considerate up there.
Do we have?
Yeah, I don't.
You guys would have that in the construction documents anyway.
Yeah, we, we have it laid out with the town guidelines, I don't remember, Tim or Joe, do you remember?
Seven to five.
Seven to five.
Well, you're going to remember, people live in very close proximity.
It's only been addressed.
It's a good point, it's fair.
And you're going to be, if you're going to be working after hours, it's going to be very uncomfortable for them.
Okay, is that it? Or you got more?
I guess that's it.
Frank, did you have anything else to add to the conditions and whatnot? John, Tim?
All set.
Charles? Not many, many moments left. All right, Julie, you had some?
No, actually I was set down.
Any last minute constructive comments from the audience?
Just so I'll be able to sleep tonight. I wanted to know, I didn't, unfortunately, I wasn't at the town meeting when they decided on the school and the location. I want to know, was it just, how many, you know, like two thirds of, of the crowd that was there at the school voted? Is that correct?
Well, I don't, you call, what the vote count was then?
It had to be in order breaks of the past.
Two thirds majority.
So you said the two thirds of, not two thirds of the voters in town.
No, of people participating.
Then, at that time, did they decide on having it in Templeton Center?
Yeah, it was a location.
Was that part of the deal or was it vote for what, yes, the school and yes, would that?
No, it was placing the school in, at that site.
And so they voted for it?
At that site, correct.
Okay, I guess I can sleep tonight.
Senator 750 South Road, I certainly hope that the board chooses to reverse the vote, number one. But if they choose not to, my question is for the superintendent and the two gentlemen who are seated at the table in the front. If they choose not to reverse the vote, what direction are you prepared to take after they take that vote?
Is that after the trial?
Yeah, I think we're fully prepared to pursue the court action and to, to have the town sue itself.
Thank you.
Okay.
Superintendent, same answer?
Yes.
Thank you. The attorney, same answer?
He's moved up, he doesn't know who represents anybody.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any more comments and any more information that the board needs to hear from the applicants, representatives? Okay, uh, is there any more comments and for any more information that the board needs to hear from the applicants, representatives, peer review agent or anything that's, um, going to be relevant to their decision on this project? If there's not, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing at eight forty-three.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
I will second that motion.
Okay, motion been made and seconded, close the public hearing. Any discussion on the motion, this is for the board only? Motion, no discussion on the motion, okay, seeing none, all in favor of closing the public hearing? Unanimous to close the public hearing, okay? So what that means to everybody in the audience, if you don't know already, we close the public hearing so there'll be no more input, um, into the project from outside source we have that the board needs to render its decision based on all information as, as now, through peer review reports and so on and so forth. Now we can discuss what Mr. Fliss had drawn up as the conditions that we read at the previous meeting, um, that he just read, uh, with the caveat that we always put the, um, right to revisit clause in there, which does address everything from parking to traffic pattern flow, uh, pastry and safety. It's always usually a last issue to put behind me.
It's always in every decision we make.
Every decision, so, um... So with that being said, is there any other conditions that the board would like to see, um, set onto, just attached to this project prior to it being voted on?
I have a question concerning the vote. The vote that we hold now will be only on the conditions?
On the conditions in the, the project, the project submitted would conditions set forth?
Approval of the site plan and application.
With the conditions that we...
With the, with the conditions that we, that we just read.
It's, it's the same vote we made the last time, but revoted.
Just kicking the can. Yep, does anybody care to make a motion to accept the, um, project with, with, with conditions?
I'll make a motion to accept the site plan approval application with the conditions that, in Bingham, set forth.
Okay, wait a second.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion been made and seconded. Any discussion, last minute discussion from the board in regards to the project in its whole, in its entirety? Seeing none, all in favor of accepting the school project site plan review plans and conditions as submitted by the applicant, um, signified by saying aye and raising their hands, aye?
Extremely reluctantly, aye.
Oppose? All right, um, just so anybody knows, if you're, we have another public hearing tonight, so please, Tom and I didn't realize till half an hour ago what time it was, chief, so... Um, so if you're going to stay for it, if you're going to leave, we'll give you a couple minutes to leave, but please go quietly.